With a prayer.
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Father, once again, we thank you for yet another day. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, what the reference of your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. I'd like to open tonight's meeting of the City Council of Nacogdoches for April 2, 2019, and call the meeting to order. The first thing we have that we're going to take care of is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas national fair housing law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Shelley Brophy, as Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, do hereby declare April as Fair Housing Month in Nacogdoches, Texas, and urge all citizens to become aware of and support the fair housing law. Next on our agenda, consent agenda. If council, a member of council would like to remove something for consideration or comment, that would be fine. If not, the Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion and approve.
I second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And for our regular agenda, number six, consider accepting the 2017-18 Annual Audit. Good evening, Mr. Manning.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? Thank you for letting us be here today. My name is John Manning with Patillo, Brown and Hill, and we're here to go over the financial statements for the FY 2018 City of Nacogdoches Audit. And y'all all should have, y'all got a copy in your packets, but we've actually given you some handbound ones today to be able to kind of go through as I kind of hit some of the highlights. One thing that I'd like to point out is, I'm sure y'all are familiar, I may use the term CAFER throughout the presentation, and that stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's a voluntary report. I mean, the city has to have an audit, but there's a minimum that you can do. The city goes far and above the minimum in order to provide the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which they also submit to the GFOA for the Report in Excellence Award. And we've reviewed last year's comments, reviewed this CAFER, and feel that again, it's a very strong candidate to get that award again. So, a lot of work goes into all of these additional statistical schedules that are in the report. So, that's a lot of city staff and a lot of time that goes into that for a lot of good information. If you'll look on page one of the bound report, this is the, why we're here, the independent audit report, and what it states is that numbers behind this accurately state the financial position of the city as of September 30, 2018. It's what we call an unmodified opinion of the four types of opinions that we can offer as accountants. The unmodified is the highest level of assurance that we can offer. Called unmodified because we didn't have to modify the report for something that the city wasn't keeping track of, or that the city had controls that were so bad that there could lead to inconsistencies in the financials. So, only a three-page document, but a very important document. I mean, y'all get grants, from time to time you issue debt, and one thing that they look at is to see, do they have a, does the place that they're lending money or giving grant money have a good chance to make sure that it gets reported and spent properly? And that's what this is showing. Just kind of parts of the report. If you look at page four, this is kind of a city staff-driven document. We helped prepare the number part, but they go through and do the narrative. It's called a management's discussion and analysis. And what this does is turn the, you know, 150 pages of numbers into narrative. So, people that aren't accustomed to looking at financials all day can read this and kind of get an idea of, is the city doing better financially than they year before? What major projects are going on? What new initiatives are being taken? So, of this report, for people that are not accountants, this 10, 13-page document is a really good place to look. It's also, if you look on page seven and eight, really the only place anymore where they have comparative data, which, you know, part of our procedures are to look at what happened this year versus last year. If something looks strange, we go get documentation and make sure that those items were correct. So, just wanted to point that document out. If you'll look on page 14, this is where we actually start the financial statements. This is your statement of net position. You've got your two columns, your governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental is everything besides water, sewer, landfill, and airport. And if you look down there, one thing I'd like to point out here is that this is the only place in the report where governmental capital assets are recorded and long-term debt. And so with that, if you go to the bottom, the net position area, the city is almost at $36 million of net position. And that is inclusive. If y'all recall, I talked last year at this time that we were going to have to implement GASB-75, which much like the pension, was where we had to accrue an actuarial accrued liability for the post-retirement health benefit plan. And so, that has been implemented this year. That's the last piece of these unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities that are out there. So, there's no more of these. We just have to now update it every year for what happens throughout the year. So, the city is able to admit and absorb both the pension and the OPEB and still have a positive net position in both governmental and water sewer. So, that's very good. And just to kind of give you an update on page 16, when you do a new standard, you have to go in and essentially book the effects of what it would have been at the beginning of the year. So, what that did was, if you can look down there, about four, three lines from the bottom, you see a line on it called prior period adjustment. So, we had to, you already had a piece of that liability booked. We had to write that liability up to what it was at October 1 of 17. That way, we can just capture what happened during the year in the financials and not just cram it all in to make the income statement look inconsistent. And that's not our opinion. That's what GAAP makes you do. So, that storm has been weathered. You've got your actuarial study from GRS, and we were very comfortable with the numbers that they presented there. So, to kind of go over the numbers, when we look at in more of a format that we're accustomed to, page 17 is your general fund balance sheet or summary of assets and liabilities and fund balance. And again, the city ended with a little over $12.5 million in fund balance. Over the last several years, that's been growing at a pretty good clip. I know there for a while it was, things were, the recession, everything, it was kind of touch and go, but, you know, the things that y'all have done, sales tax has been going up, and there's some things going on. And so, the financial picture looks good here from a financial stability standpoint. One good thing here is if you kind of look at what we do and the risk, if you look, you have about $19 million of total assets there. About 16.7 are in cash and pools, which we confirm 100% with an outside source. So, I mean, we've already got 90% of the liability, I mean, of the assets there with third-party verification, which as an auditor, you can't get any better audit evidence than somebody else telling you that that number's correct, not just finance or city staff saying, hey, that's really what we have. So, from that standpoint, a big batch of that is very easy to get correct. And your property taxes receivable are collected by the county, so they have a report that we can look at and test. That's another $500,000 there. So, not a lot of risk there on the balance sheet. And if you look there at the end of the fund balances, again, very good balances there. If you look on page 19, your general fund ended up with a little over half a million dollars of improvement to fund balance at the end of the year. Almost cracked the $20 million mark there on revenues. And so, at the end of the year, like I mentioned, it's about $12.5 million of fund balance, which is well within the guidelines of what GFOA recommends of three and a half months of expenditures in reserve. Your other governmental funds are your debt service, grants, all those items that don't meet the criteria to be listed by themselves. There's a combining statement in the back, and those are all listed there as well. Page 21 starts your business-type activities, which is your water, sewer, sanitation, and airport fuel. And again, if you look on page 22, all of those items or those funds have very good financial resources there. But remember, those numbers are large, but they're large because there's a lot of capital-driven assets there, which are not very liquid. So, when you look there, say, net position in your water sewer fund, and it says 80.9 million, that doesn't mean they have 80.9 million to spend. And I know y'all know that. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's a lot bigger than what's in general fund or in the governmental activities because basically of the water structure and all the infrastructure that's there. So, again, in these things, again, though, the, you know, airport fuel and sanitation both have positive positions in net assets. And in your internal service funds, y'all are the, one of the few people that their self-funded health insurance plan is actually in a pretty good spot. A lot of places try to make it extremely a very, very, very good plan and charge as little as possible, and that's great if you don't have some kind of catastrophic claims. And, you know, I wanted to point out that what y'all are doing, there's a little over like 1.5 million or 1.4 million there in reserves for that employee self-funded plan. So, all in all, you know, from a financial standpoint, a very good year. I know sometimes people like to look at some of the different schedules in here, and I wanted to point out, too, that we did this with the pension liability, but if you go to the OPEB liability on page 53, I mean, this is six pages of assumptions that are being used to come up with these liabilities. So, as I mentioned last time, if you go down here, your OPEB liability's a little over 1.9 million, I mean, 1.1 million, and a 1% difference either way in the discount rate, you know, would make that liability go up or down $200,000 or $300,000. So, just be mindful, that's an estimate. There is an obligation there, but getting a concrete number is almost impossible. But these are as close as we can get, and they are using proper actuarial techniques. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those now, but I also need to make sure that I thank all the city staff that we work with. We go out to all the departments that collect cash, then we do walkthroughs of their procedures. We talk to people about fraud. We pull people in and say, we give them the opportunity to think if there's something going on. We make ourselves available so they can, if they think something's going on, they can at least let us know, and we can look into it. And I think we did about 15 of those, just randomly pulling people in, and nothing came back on those, which is always a good thing. So, again, this isn't just us or just the finance department. It's the whole city that we deal with, and they're always a pleasure to deal with. And if you have any questions, like I mentioned, I'd be glad to answer those now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manning. First of all, I want to ask if there's anyone here that's in attendance tonight that has a comment to make about the annual audit. Okay. If not, council members, questions, comments?
It's a great report. I appreciate that. It's very, very thorough. I'm curious, I appreciate that there's awards, but being from, being a layperson in this world, how common is it to have something as well put together as what we have here? Is that, is that average? Is that nine out of 10?
Well, I think we've seen the whole gamut. We're very lucky. A lot of the clients that we have do good work, but there are a lot that don't. So, I, you know, of the ones that we do, usually if we get them and they're not very good, we try to figure out a way not to do them anymore. So, from a percentage of what we do, most of our clients do a very good job, but this is no different. I mean, they, the effort that goes into having a control structure that works and taking the time to put together the financials that these guys do, it's a lot of work, and it's very good.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I think some of us might be curious to know, what is an example of an outside source that corroborates the financial well-being of the city?
Well, we would, like, you have a depository where you hold your deposits. So, we write a confirmation, city types it up, we get it, we mail it from our office, and it's returned to us. So, we send those to the bank, we send them to Texpool, we send them to Nacogdoches County, and we get them independent of just Pam, or somebody giving us a bank record saying we have $14 million in cash.
Right.
And let me look at a bank statement, because we've seen it before where people have handmade bank statements, and with technology the way it is now, they look very real. And a lot of times, in these fraud cases, if someone would just have done something like type up a confirmation, mail it, and make sure you get it back, it's not very hard to do, and it's very, very meaningful. So, that's, that's pretty much the ones. We also do it with your grants.
Oh, okay.
We confirm with them how much they've sent you. There's also for your sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
You know, all the people in the city that collect it, collect it and send it to the state.
Right.
So, the state accumulates it, says, okay, Nacogdoches, this is what you get. And that's several million dollars that we go to a website, get the amounts that's from them.
Right.
Tie that back to the city, same with property taxes, collected by somebody else.
Right.
So, there's a lot of big numbers that, we still have to do a lot of work on them, but the comfort level we get is a lot more than just city staff saying, well, here, here's what we collected. We actually can confirm that and verify it. So...
Okay. Well, thank you. This is always good to see, and thank you for the good news and your good work.
And thank you, guys, for letting us do the audit. We appreciate it.
Of course. Of course. You have a safe trip.
All right.
Agenda item number seven. I'm sorry? Do we need to accept it? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the audit.
I move that we accept the audit for fiscal year 2018.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number seven, ordinance of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas, amending Chapter 106, et cetera, et cetera. Hi, Mr. Bartlett. Good evening.
Et cetera. Steve Bartlett, City Engineer. Tonight, Counsel, I have for your consideration a revision to an ordinance, basically amending Chapter 106, which is our utilities ordinance. It's a big ordinance with a lot of things in it. Particularly, we're looking at Division 2, where we have two main sections, and they are wholesale supplier drought contingency and retail supplier drought contingency. So, every five years, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, requires us to review our drought contingency plan, underlining the word "plan." So, we can review that internally with staff, we can review it with city council, but in our case, we don't have a plan, the plan's enveloped in an ordinance. So, we re-review the ordinance, and then we will come to you if we have modifications or changes, or even to get that update blessed. So, it's that period of time in 2019, we have to let them know we've reviewed it, and sometimes there are no changes, but we have to acknowledge that in that. So, in this review, we identified a number of typographical errors that I think have been around since probably its origin, so as we read through word by word. So, a bunch of what we have tonight for you, just some simple changes of some misspelled words and things. The only substantial change that we have in there is a modification of what is really was a rate schedule, or is a rate schedule in the drought contingency ordinance. Now, let me just remind you, the drought contingency ordinance and plan basically is something that we invoke during drought conditions or during low-water supply conditions. So, we could have the surface water plant go out, for example, and not be in a drought, but we're in very dire need for water reduction, and so we would invoke it. The way its ordinance is written, now the city manager can make that as an emergency decision, and we can invoke one of four stages of drought. We could talk about the details all you want, but basically, it goes from a voluntary stage all the way to, you know, don't use water unless we tell you to, kind of. So, we've been in stage one and two back in 2011 era when we had that. So, we went to stage two at that point and then rescinded it. So, this is a valuable ordinance. It's a good tool. It's more difficult to implement than you may think citywide, so it takes a lot of PR and a lot of work, but it's a good plan to have. So, our current ordinance has a section that has rates. So, we reference water rates in there, and they actually have a table depending on the gallons you use with some elevated rates that quite honestly are punitive, and they're intended to be punitive to discourage uses. So, if you use over 10,000 gallons, 10,000 to 30,000, the rate doubles. If you use, you know, from 30,000 to 75,000, the rate goes up two and a half times. So, there's some scaling in there. There's not a lot of science behind the scaling. I've been asked that a bunch this week. It is just some punitive numbers, and they're generally whole multipliers, and it's quite, like I say, quite honestly meant to curtail your use of water. So, what we found out is that the rates that we were charging in there, in some cases, were less than our current water rate. So, if we had a drought, it'd be cheaper to use water, and that's not the intention at all. So, if you recall, about four years ago or so, we updated our water rate ordinance, which is Section 321 of the same ordinance. We updated that and kind of recrafted that, and that had a five-year scalable increase, if y'all remember that. So, we're, I think, year four of that right now. So, what we've done, long story short, we modified this ordinance to just reference that rate schedule and not quote new rates in this separate place. Having rates in two places was not a good idea. So, we reference it, and all we list in here are just multipliers. So, it's the rates, whatever the rates are, and times two, times three, times four, depending on where we are in stages of drought. So, that was the main change, is to clean this up. So, as you modify rates in the future, this drought ordinance will just follow that automatically, and the rates won't be cheaper during a drought than they were. So, anyway, be happy after a public comment to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here that wants to comment on the proposed changes to this ordinance? Okay. None? Counsel? Questions? Comments?
I just one question. Updated rate schedule, is that for all four stages?
Yes. The rate schedule now, the way we've done it, has, if you use between this gallons and this gallons, then it's two times the regular rate schedule. And each stage has higher numbers for multipliers. Yes. So, it doesn't actually quote a dollar amount anymore, it just quotes a multiplier and then references, if you pay 13, 25, for example, for residential base meter charge, it may be double that, or triple that, or quadruple that after 10,000 gallons. And by the way, these are residential and irrigation only, not commercial, and these are above 10,000 gallons. So, under 10,000 gallons, there's not a punitive rate schedule. So, your normal household use, we established, could be 8,000 gallons is our average. Those people aren't getting a punitive rate schedule.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of these ordinance changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven as it's written.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven as written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number eight, consider ordinance amending ordinance number 1778-9-18, appropriating various amounts in accordance with the budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019. Mr. Bray, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel Brian Bray, your Director of Community Services. The item before you is not asking for additional city funds, but to consider a budget adoption, excuse me, a budget amendment that would allow us to receive funds and then expend funds from the Friends of Historic Nacogdoches Incorporated, who wrote a grant to the Bryant Foundation for Llanana Creek Trail improvements in four specific areas. The first one is a, you can see by the yellow line there, a meandering trail through Festival Park, which would start or end, depending on which way you're looking at it, at the South Street Bridge, and wind its way over to the east side of the park, and then connect through some trail signage and make its way over to Clint Dempsey Soccer Complex, and then you could take the trail all the way up to the north loop. So, anytime we have a chance to expand our trail, whether it's 100 yards or two miles, we jump on that chance, because eventually, we would like to have the trail encircle the city at some point. So, I've had several people ask, well, why does the trail end right there at the bridge? Well, it's a beginning or an end, depending on which way you look at it, and eventually, we'll be able to connect over to the farmer's market. But with the adoption of this amendment, we would be able to install an asphalt trail using street department and parks department labor, so materials would be purchased, and then be able to expand from there. The second part is a concrete pathway underneath the Park Street Bridge. We have an agenda item coming up that would actually cover the design of that pathway underneath, the 215 consulting there. So, I don't have any of the specifics of it, but essentially, it would be a concrete pathway underneath the Park Street Bridge, because right now, the bridge, when it drains, anytime we have a rain, the drain holes are right over the pathway. And so, you end up with these large craters, which make for great obstacles for people pushing strollers or bicyclists. I've had several people have to, you know, swerve to go around the holes. And the second, or the third one is a improved surface through Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop. This is an area where you had previously named it the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop, and so it is a trail in paper only. With this project, we would actually be able to establish a trail on the ground. We've not been able to establish whether it would be an improved surface like stabilized soil, or something like we're going to do in Festival Park where it's asphalt, but it would be a designated trail on the ground, whereas right now, it's a pasture. And then the final part would actually be some miscellaneous improvements to the Father Marhill Springs area. Dr. Abernathy, as we all know very well, did lots and lots of work on our trail system. Unfortunately, some of that work has seen better days, because anytime you put wood down in East Texas, eventually it rots, termites take over. And so, this, these funds would allow us to go back in and simply replace the work that Abernathy had done previously. So, it's not building any new bridges or building anything like that. It's replacing like-for-like for existing materials. So, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment or would like to speak to this? Okay. Hearing none. Counsel? Questions? Comments? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
My goodness. So, Chair will entertain a motion for amending Agenda Item Number Eight.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eight. Want me to read the whole thing?
As presented.
As presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight as presented. I have no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I noticed that Mr. Apton, Mrs. Middlebrook, is there anyone here else here from Friends of Historic? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we are so glad you're here, and we thank you so much for the work you do. It makes a huge difference in things that we have not been able to accomplish without your help. So, it's good for our city. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, consider contract approval with 215 Consulting to provide professional engineering services for storm drainage, infrastructure repairs, and improvements. Good evening, Mr. Offerman.
Good evening, Mayor of City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant City Engineer. We've got for you this evening a engineering contract to consider for 215 Consulting for engineering services, including design surveying, preliminary and final design, as well as bidding and construction administration for repairs and improvements to the storm drain infrastructure around town. Staff has identified 10 culvert and bridge structures around the city. We've identified them as in immediate need of repair or replacement. This is for various reasons, from ensuring proper conveyance of stormwater to safety of the structures themselves. 215 has got extensive expertise with hydraulic modeling and design, and so staff feels they're a great selection for this work. There will be as many as three separately bid construction projects that come from these designs. And so, you can see on your screen the breakdown of services, and on your agenda information sheet, you can see the breakdown per location for those costs. Just real quick, lump sum services include design survey, design estimates, and final design and details, all totaling $116,500. Aside from that, the bid and preparation and construction phase services are going to be on a, on an hourly or time and materials basis, and the maximum for that is not to exceed $26,500. So, altogether, we're asking you to approve a maximum of $143,000 in this contract. Mayor, after public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has any comments to make about this agenda item? None? Counsel? No?
How many locations? How many locations?
10.
10 locations.
Anything?
Nope.
You use the same type of system you do with the streets? I mean, do you use a grading? I mean, how do you decide where this?
Not on this.
How does this work?
This has come from several years of observances on specifically Regay Street has got a headwall right north of Austin Street that's been a hazard for some time. We've done intermittent kind of bolstering of the headwall there, but it's not getting any better, and so it's time to go ahead and replace that. Part of the reason for the three separately bid, as many as three separately bid projects is, we're going to try and get Regay and possibly the Pioneer Park Bridge on the ground for construction as soon as we've got design. So, those are priority one in this contract for 215, is to get those designed as quickly as possible, so we can go ahead and get those out for construction ahead of the other eight or so locations. So, to answer your question, it's just been kind of a long time coming, and some of these, for example, the Burke Street Bridge has just kind of settled over a period of time, and it's just in need of repair, so it's all just based on staff observation, so.
No, that's, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Something people ask.
Yes, ma'am.
How to come up with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the contract.
Make a motion that we approve the contract with 215 Consulting to provide professional engineering services for storm drain, infrastructure repairs, and improvements.
I second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item number 10 has been removed for further work, so that concludes tonight's meeting. I appreciate all of you and the attendants.